All right. Follow me to order. We stand for the pledge.
Geez. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education return to regular session at 6:20 PM.
Oh, favor.
I. Or. I got nothing.
All right, let's start this evening. Mrs. Feldman is going to give us our first presentation for the 2425 budget. And just a point of interest that the technology presentation that was scheduled for this evening has been postponed to a date to be determined. Thank you. Mrs. Feldman, you can share your screen whenever you're ready. Take yourself off of mute too, please. Laura, you're still muted.
Good evening. Sorry for the little glitch. Welcome to the kickoff of the 2425 budget presentation. I'm pleased that everybody was able to attend on such a chilly night. We're going to start off by defining what a rollover budget is. We're going to talk about the known budgetary increases and the overall budgetary view. So first off, rollover budget consists of the prior year financial plans updated for the current budget. This budget was updated from using the May of 2023 budget adoption. And in, in the rollover budget, we include all the recurring expenditures from the district. We trend things such as software or additional staff service contracts. The things that we have trended are utilities, contractual obligations that we know, retirement costs, health insurance and BOS. This is the starting point for Eden's budget process. Any questions so far? So the first thing we're going to talk about is we're going to see a 5% increase for the district liability insurance, the health insurance premium and the BOS. We're going to anticipate an 8% increase for utilities. And we're, we know that the ER system is going to go up 1.8% to 17.6% this year. The teacher's retirement system will go up 0.45% to 10.25% this year. The debt service, which as I like to point out is our mortgage payment, that is updated per the amortization schedule. So when we start to look at it, we break down the budget into three parts, the general support instructional and the unallocated. So we're going to start with the general support, which is the Board of Education. And I want to remind everyone, the Board of Education are volunteers. They receive no compensation. This is the money that it costs the district in these lines to support the Board of Education and their endeavors. Central administration, which is the superintendent's office, finance department, which is the business office. And we have legal personnel and public service. We have buildings and grounds, mail, BOS data processing. We have our liability insurance, water sewer, refund on taxes and BOS administrative costs. These will all make up our general support. Now I'd like to talk about the detail. The 2324 adopted budget for the Board of Education was 36,000. The plan is for it to go up to 38,000 with a $1,489 increase or 4.06%. Central administration is going from 288,000 to 306,000, a $17,891 increase or 6.20. Finance department will go from 467,000 to 531,000, 63,905 or a 13.67% increase. Legal, personal and public services, personnel and public services will go from 154,000 to 162,000, $8,199 increase or 5.31%. Buildings and grounds mail. Dehydrated processing and BOS will go from 2.8 million to 2.9 million, $72,490 increase or 2.53%. Liability insurance, water sewer, refund on taxes and BOS administrative costs will go from 546,000 to 581,000, a $35,748 increase for 6.54%. General support total, subtotal will be 4.3 million to 4.5 million or 199,722 dollar increase, 4.58%. And that is the total of all the items above. Any questions? We're going to move on to instructional. Instructional is the core mission of our district. We start with the building administration, curriculum and professional development. It is going from 1.4 million to 1.49 million, an increase of $89,675 or 6.39% increase. General education, that is the activities that go on in the classrooms. It's going from 9.1 million to 9.5 million or up 380,632, 4.17%. Our program for students with disabilities go from 4.9 to 5.2, 290,763 dollars or a 5.91% increase. Occupational education is our career and tech add from the BOS. It's going to go from 872,000 to 915,000, an increase of $43,603 or 5%. As we spoke earlier, it was a projection, it's a projection of BOS used to go up for 5% and this line clearly shows that. Community education is going to go from 36.9 to 38.9 of $2,040 or 5.53% increase. School, library and informational technology will go from 792,000 to 836,000, up $43,305 or 5.46. Pupil services, which includes nurses, guidance, clubs, musicals and sports, will go from 2.12 million to 2.15 million, up $27,941, 1.32%. Leaving our subtotal for instruction of 19,279,000 to 20,157,000, up $877,960 or 4.55%. Pupil transportation is slated to go from 2.2 million to 2.3 million, up $162,904 or 7.34. Any questions? Undistributed, undistributed is our civic activities, our fitness center and building usage expenditures. They are going from 35,000 to 36,600, a $1,448 increase or 4.12. Employee benefits are going from 7.4 million to 8.6 million, $1,235,982 or 16.62%. Most of the costs there are out of our control. Our debt service or mortgage payments comes from our amortization schedule for the bonds and it's going to go from 2.9 million to a little over 3 million. An increase of $99,878 or 3.44%. Inner fund transfer includes monies for the special education summer school, the local share. It includes $100,000 for the capital outlay that is voter authorized each year. And it includes money to support the cafeteria operations. That will stay static at $170,000 with a zero increase. So our undistributed comes, goes from 10.5 million to 11.8 million or 1,337,308 dollar increase, 12.68%. All totaled, our rollover budget goes from the actual budget last year of 36,499,63 to 38,987,857 dollars or 2,577,894 dollars, 7.08%. So our total revenues from 2324, remember we talked, we compare our total revenues from last year to our expenditures to find out what our budget gap is. We anticipate with known expenditure increases going to 38,987,857 dollars, leaving us with a gap to fill through the budget process of 2,577,894 dollars. Any questions?
Yeah, Laura, this is Jeff. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So that gap to fill, the 2,577,894 dollars, is that based on having the same state aid that we had last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the remainder of our budget calendar. I received the governor's stating runs yesterday. They were not in time to be included in this presentation, but on February 14th at 6 o'clock, when I update the budget again, they will be included in their presentation. March 1st, the property tax cap calculation is due to New York State. March 20th at 6:00 PM will be the Board of Education meeting and the budget will be updated in that meeting. On March 27th, we've scheduled this at 6:00 PM, a budget workshop. On March 31st, New York State budget adoption and we should receive our legislative runs for eight. If we have an on-time budget, we don't always have one. We hope for one every year. April 9th at 6:00 PM is the tentative budget adoption date. April 29th, the New York State property tax report card is due to New York State. And May 7th at 6:00 PM will be the public hearing, the Eden Elementary Auditorium, or if it is open at that point. May 21st, 2024 will be the budget vote at the middle school, high school auditorium entrance at 9:00 AM through 9:00 PM. This concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
I mean, I just, I guess, want to make a statement. That 7% is a little daunting to me. I know this is how the budget process works and this is the preliminary. These are the preliminary figures, but it's a big chunk of change.
So you're saying, source was that a budget to budget increase of 7% seems, seems like it's a little exorbitant at this point?
I mean, at this point, I know we have to shore some things down. I'm not quite sure where it would be, but.
Well, half of this, half of the increases in employee benefits, so.
So some, some good news on the horizon there in terms of health insurance benefits. We did have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. We have three bidders on our, our health insurance, including our current provider. And Laura and I have received some information from our consultant that the initial bids are very favorable. There might be will be some level of increase. Well, the potentially is some level of increase. There's potential of a decrease. You know, depending on how the presentation is fair it out. So that's really good news because usually sometimes you're looking at it pretty significant increases in your health insurance cost.
So that was at 16%, so you're saying that could be?
So I, I think there's more than just health insurance that goes into that 6%. But the reason I asked the point of question I did in that 2.5 million dollar budget to budget increase is if our state aid stays the same or heaven forbid, it's actually less than, that entire increase would be on the backs of our taxpayers. And I know this board and this community share sentiment that we need to keep our taxpayer burden as low as possible. So that means we have some pretty significant work to do, taking a hard look at this, this budget.
Laura, what would be the tax rate if we went out at the 2.5 million increase?
I do not factor that at this point, so I don't have that available for you.
I just have a question, you know, for like someone watching this presentation who doesn't know anything about budget. How are the numbers figured out? Because there's an increase in literally every single column except one. So for someone watching and saying, oh my gosh, our actually, you know, it's a 7% increase. Where do those numbers come from? I guess if that's a fair question.
That's a great question, Jen. They come from, we look at the contractual obligations for the salary schedules and we move all the salaries up. We take the total salaries and then we multiply them out by the new ERS and TRS rates. We calculate the Medicare and social security that everyone is mandated to pay. Employers pay a portion. We, we calculate that out and then we simply trend forward items such as health insurance went up by 5%. We looked at BOS going up by 5%. BOS may not go up a full 5%, but we don't know that yet.
So we're basically taking five digit numbers, throwing some multipliers on certain things and seeing how it falls, so.
Yeah, and simultaneously, I'm, you know, Laura and I are meeting with each of the principals and department heads regarding needs and wants for next school year. That could be an increase in staffing, a decrease in staffing. It could be, you know, equipment and those types of things. And gathering all of that information to get a more complete picture each week in each month that we go forward. Any other? Okay.
On request to withdraw specific items from consent agenda. That upon the recommendation of superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
This is the approximate position in time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, a parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit. That new business, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of elementary teacher Lisa Girasi be accepted effective July 1st, 2024. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Girasi for her 20 years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
That upon the recommendation of superintendent, the resignation nation for the purpose of retirement of school counselor David Hassett be accepted effective July 1st, 2024. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Hassett for his 26 years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
But upon the recommendation of superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of math teacher Laura Fesley be accepted effective July 1st, 2024. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Fesley for her 35 years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus attendant Mary Terrasiewicz be, Tara Shavitch, I apologize, be accepted effective January 19th, 2024. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Tara Shavitch for her 24 and a half years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
That.
Wait, we skipped.
Skip Zimmer. That upon the recommendation of superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus attendant Diane Zimmer be accepted effective December 23rd, 2023. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Zimmer for her 16 years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
But upon the recommendation of superintendent, the resignation of Christopher Naughton from the elementary and musical lighting position be accepted effective January 5th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
New business appointments, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Thomas Talbot be appointed on probation as a school bus driver effective January 18th, 2024 and ending September 17th, 2024. Salary is based upon CSCA contract level nine, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
But upon the recommendation of superintendent, Judith Rizone be appointed on probation as a bus attendant effective January 18th, 2024 and ending September 17th, 2024. Salary is based upon CSCA contract level four, step 16.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Brandon Watson, Brandon Watson be appointed as the workplace violence prevention coordinator.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
Congratulations. Um, new business, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following sports be combined with North Collins for the 2024-2025 school year, boys volleyball and cheerleading.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
But upon the recommendation of superintendent, the revised transportation route spreadsheet be approved effective January 19th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I.
Opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carrier.
Um, on to the business report.
Good evening. I just wanted to inform the board that our fourth quarter sales tax that we received had a 2.5 increase from the prior year, so that's good news. And on January 12th, the district received one response for our RFP request for proposal for a new buildings and grounds truck. Their response could not meet our delivery date, so we are rejecting their response and are looking into what are the next steps for replacing the buildings and grounds truck.
Superintendent's report.
You can't make it too small. Okay, thanks. I guess. So what I provided for the board that's accessible to the public as well on our website via the board agenda is the 10 legislative actions for school success as promoted by the New York State Council of School Superintendents. And I'm just going to go over this pretty quickly and happy to answer any questions. Some of this is, will be familiar to you because we've been, we've been pushing the envelope on some of these issues for quite a while as a group of superintendents across the state. Number one is to modify the current APPR laws and regulations. That's much overdue for, for a significant transition to something that is more meaningful and purposeful for all districts that are involved. Moving on to, we've talked a lot about zero emission buses. And what we are proposing as a group of superintendents is to, first off, slow down the, the process. Allow for some reasonable exemptions. And most importantly for a district like ours, a little bit deeper study on what this actually means for a rural district that is, is, you know, significant square footage, if you will, and particularly with our climate. There's some concerns, obviously, about the zero emission buses on many levels. Number three is continue to fight for a better, better civil service system. Currently, the score on a test is a real marker for, for gaining a position in a school district that's bound by service. And as we continue to move away from high stakes testing for our students, we should likely do the same for our very important employees. Number four is continue to enhance student safety and, you know, collaboration with local law enforcement. And I'm going to remind you too that what I'm sharing with you is statewide. Okay, this is, this doesn't reflect locally as much as it reflects is, is what we're pushing for across the state. So some of the things that I'll mention may not seem pertinent to you because we have an excellent relationship with our local law enforcement. But there may be some, some districts across the state that don't experience that same benefit. Continue to support current technology education. This board is aware that we receive aid on the first $30,000 of the CTE instructional salary. Well, that's, that's nice, but when instructional salaries are 80, 90, $100,000, that A ratio should certainly increase as well. And we do support CTE education in this district. We have approximately 30% of our, of our junior and senior class that attends those BOS classes and, and they're quite successful at them. We're always looking for more reserve fund, fund flexibility, including moving away from the arbitrary 4% unallocated fund balance requirement. Even the comptroller has made statements that 8% is much more reasonable for school districts. I'll also remind you that municipalities don't have a percent limit, only school districts do. We talked last year, we hold out a lot of high hopes that the, that the capital outlay authority would go from $100,000 to $250,000. Absolute game changer for a district our size. I'll remind you that $100,000 capital outlay gets you about $75,000 to $70,000 worth of work. The remainder of those funds are, are fees towards architects and construction management and licensure and so on, so forth. We can do a lot of healthcare for students. We can do a lot of, of care for twenty-five thousand dollars, an awful lot of work. Um, there's a, a push to continue to extend the, the retiree earnings limit exemptions. This has been a one-year approval for, for quite a while. Um, districts across the state are tapping into the retiree, uh, uh, market, if you will, to, to fill those high need positions. Um, but if this is not extended, then those, those retirees are limited to earning thirty-five thousand dollars or less uh, without, uh, before their pension is impacted. So we're hoping that, that is extended. Um, modify the tax cap, eliminate negative tax caps, of course. And there's some other, other information, information in there that I, I ask for the review as we get deeper into, uh, the, uh, budget killing. Number ten is interesting, and I'm going to have a, a, an editorial comment on that. August instructional days, uh, our calendar is going to continue to get tighter and tighter as, as the state mandates, uh, certain, certain, uh, holidays be observed by all school districts regardless of their, of their population. Uh, we, we will be recognizing in the next school year, the Asian Lunar New Year. Um, there are schools in New York City that are, um, also required to, uh, recognize, uh, three additional holidays. As those holidays continue to infiltrate in our hundred and eighty day, uh, calendar, it will be important to consider instructional days outside of what the norm is. Uh, and, and that's what that last bullet point is. And, and in terms of calendar, I do have, um, a couple of different versions of calendars, um, that, uh, Barb and I worked on in the last few weeks. Uh, the regional calendar is out now. Um, we will do our best to closely mirror that regional calendar and that, eh, that really goes to uh, supporting the number of our students that attend BOSI's for either C T E classes or specialized, uh, um, uh, classes that, that we can't, uh, host in our district. The reason that is important is, um, so the reason we mirror that is so that their instructional program, uh, isn't, isn't interrupted by, you know, a, a great variation in our knowledge. Okay? Other than that, um, I don't have, have much of a construction update. You, you saw the biggest update, uh, that I would give you. When you entered the library, they're continuing to do some towel workout, uh, in the exterior here, which is coming along uh, in great fashion. I appreciate, uh, the town's support and communication regarding our recent, uh, power outage. And was happy to, uh, happy that I was able to use and utilize the G L P parking lot for, uh, to assist the grid with some distribution. Uh, you know, we were closed today primarily because of, uh, the storm hitting, uh, um, and preventing a lot of our staff from, uh, getting into the district safely and, uh, you may hear from me in eight minutes as well. So that's all I have. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Student report? No, I didn't know if they were zooming.
No.
So. Uh, board report roundtable. Oh, we good? It's going to be seven o'clock in eight minutes. That's all. Anybody else? Anybody?
How many people are actually watching? Seven, really?
Hello, seven people. Thank you for watching.
All right, you seven, sleep in tomorrow.
You good? All right, the next regular board meeting, Board of Education meeting is February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, Valentine's Day, six P M in the middle school, high school, library.
I told you we shouldn't have it.
That's okay. Please bring chocolate. We have to read the next thing. Regular board meeting. Oh, okay. Budget workshop, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, six P M. Special, special Board of Education meeting tentative budget adoption, April ninth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Public hearing on the budget, May seventh, twenty twenty-four, seven P M. Annual budget vote, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, nine A M to nine P M in the middle school, high school auditorium foyer. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education meeting be adjourned at six fifty-four P M.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming, everybody.